All right, the hour is 6:00 PM and with the Village Board President, we will first, slightly different than normal, first with the Village Board President, we'll call the opening of the public hearing for the fiscal year 2020 budget coordinates. This time, if anyone would like to comment specifically to the budget, now is the opportunity in this public hearing. Step on up, this is the opportunity.
Are we in about five minutes? Kitty, all right, no, I'm fine. Go ahead, darling. Kitty.
My question is, when was the budget given to everyone to look at? How long did you have to look at that? And then also, did you find anything in it? And if so, that you disagreed with, did you correspond with someone to say, well, this folks out of Helter or that's him? Another question is, if you vote for the budget, are you going to allow everything that is in the budget to happen? And by that means, I mean, for instance, if they need three new police cars, I think in the budget, there's two, are you going to positively allow them to buy it just because it's in the budget? I know Sherri stood up here and said that we needed to have a reserve of six months, but every time she says that, it doesn't seem like they cut anything out of the budget to step towards that direction. And, you know, if you can just email me your concerns or my thoughts, your answers to, you know, my thoughts, I would appreciate it.
Anyone else regarding the budget? There being no further comment regarding, we'll close the public hearing on the draft Chatham budget and call it a ward of the regular Village Board meeting. If you would now all join me in a moment of silence. The Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, you have the rule.
Trustee Mann.
Present.
Trustee Gerger.
Present.
Trustee Charo.
Present.
Trustee, Trustee Detmers.
Here.
Trustee Mau.
Present.
Trustee Churchill.
Present.
Village President Kimbi.
Present. Public announcements? Last, you guys got anything going on?
First of all, we're having a ribbon cutting ceremony at 5:00 PM Thursday night. I'd like to see all of you there for the coming of the rebellion. That'll kick off the 72nd Chatham American Legion homecoming. And then on Saturday at 4 o'clock down at the elementary school, we'll be lining up for the parade. And if you'd like to march in the parade, you're more than welcome to sign up. You're over here, you get there, you're over there, line further up, you're lining it. So if you wait till 5 o'clock, you meet towards the town end. Fortunately, we don't have horses, so you won't.
Hey, last, what about the 4th of July?
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
I thought we were having another meeting, which you're right. July 4th on the square by the Veterans Memorial. It'll be our fifth annual reading of the Declaration of Independence. And we'll also be introducing the new names on the military banners of the 2018 graduates from Chatham.
Followed by?
Followed by the pin. Anyway, questions and things for Steve Welch down at the VFW on 501 East Mulder.
Parchment.
Bestin Mulder.
Parchment and pints.
Parchment and pints, that's right.
Go, which is actually, if you've not done this, at noon on the 4th of July, they re-upped an age-old tradition of reading the public, a public reading of the Declaration of Independence, spurred on by one of our former history and social studies teachers here at Glenwood High School. After that, they go in where the air conditioning is and where you can get a drink, and then he'll lead a discussion on some of the things that were going around the world. Last year, he was talking about what was going on in Europe at the time that the US, or we were establishing the US. So, interesting guy, very smart man, if you've never heard, you'll have to talk to him.
Yeah. And then also, the show part will be there a few minutes early, singing some patriotic melodies, and then they'll be doing the national anthem and going.
They'll get there. 4th of July is also the Village fireworks. If you'd like to bring your pontoon boats out to Community Park. They do those the same place in the soccer fields at dusk as the expert lighting fireworks decides it's dark enough and he's ready to go, that's the time. But dusk in Community Park, always encourage people to get there early. It fills up, as does the library, the subdivision to the south, the north, east, and west. But they put on a really good show last year and look forward to a good show this year. Anything that I missed?
Then the corn's only this tall, so you won't have to worry about it.
Yeah, you can see it, you can see it from farther away this year, because the corn's not nearly as tall.
But the mosquitoes might carry you away.
That's right.
The vanilla stuff, use the vanilla stuff, it's magic. All right, public comments on agenda topics, Ms. Judd. Did you have something else?
Well, and what I said earlier.
Okay, Ms. Billings.
Are the, gee, don't get me wrong, are the, sorry. On the agenda is the green fee program on that agenda, my internet went out.
Yes.
The only thing I have to say about that is, of course, I love Facebook. Nah, there's a lot of confusion out there, and I think I'm as confused too, that the green fee, I don't have a problem with it up in $4, even though I don't use it, okay? $24 a year is not going to kill me. But the problem is, is it seems like all of a sudden you're getting information that this is going to be taken out of that, and this is going to be taken out of that, and maybe this, but guess what? This is no longer going to be in there. Before you guys decide to vote on this, it needs to be laid out, because when you guys are up here talking about the green fee agenda, there's a lot of conversation going on. There's some people saying, okay, I want to table this, okay, but you had tree guys here, you guys decided on the one tree company, is that part of what you guys decided for the green fee? You know, it just needs to be laid out in black and white, because there's just too much, I didn't know sweeper was going to be bought out of that, sorry, I don't think it belongs there, my opinion only, I think it belongs in the public courts. And the budget that you guys are looking at, rather than the green fee, I hear that we are no longer going to get leaf bags, I mean, out of that green fee. This is a lot of what the citizens were thinking, they're going to still be able to get the leaf bags, fill them up, put them out there, get them taken care of. But all the conversation going on around here, it's not laid out in bam, bam, bam. That's what your citizens want, by what I'm reading and what I'm hearing. It's not just me speaking for myself. There's a lot of massive confusion out there, like, is the salary for the street sweeper guy going to come out of the green fee? If that's the case, I can understand why you guys raised it, you know? It's going to have to be an operator running that sweeper. Then people question, did the village have a sweeper? Where the heck is it? You know, well, it's probably broken down in a shed someplace. Do not make the mistake of putting money into that sweeper to try to get a better trade-in on a lease. Are we leasing that sweeper? We buying the sweeper. Are we leasing to own that sweeper? These are simple questions that are not answered simply, you know, they're just not out there in black and white for people to look on the village website and know, bam, here it is, $2 or $4 a month, this is what you get, this is what you no longer get. Make it simple for any simple person like me, but do it for the citizens. The voter G M that put you in this office and wants the facts instead of going to Facebook and going, oh, this person said this, and this person said this, you know, blah, blah, blah. Your guys' job, give the facts to the citizens on it. My opinion again, the street sweeper should not come out of the green fee. Okay? $4 a month, even though I don't use it, okay, I'll give you $4 a month. But on top of that $4 a month, I got to figure out when you guys are going to raise the water rates again. So, $4 more on my utility, all of a sudden, the water rates, which right now, if I'm not mistaken, please correct me if I'm wrong, water rates right now that we are paying is what was projected for 24, correct me? Oh, it's past that, you guys, what is the problem here? So, that gets snuck in on the citizens, are you timing me, attorney? Okay, so that gets snuck in on the citizens as well, all of a sudden, here's another hike. It's not just a $4 green fee, you guys, it's the water utilities going up and stuff like that. I'm running around the neighborhood, just the poor senior citizens not there yet, to get the 10% discount for your electric bill, 10% is 10%, how many citizens really know about that? My mother does not get on the internet, God, oh, thank you for that. But you guys are not spelling it out, it's all over the place. Spell it out, get it in black and white to where they look on there, or they come and see, Pat, Pat, show me exactly what the green fee is for, Pat can say, here's a printout, there you go, go on your way. Spell it out, you guys, because spending the money without us knowing, and take care of those water rates, can you do it? Thank you. How many more minutes? I can do the little jig.
One. But I started you late, so.
You did!
And your jig is, your jig is not on our agenda tonight. All right, can I have a motion to put the consent agenda on the table?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Mau has made a motion of a second.
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Mann. Questions or discussion regarding the minutes for the warrants? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mau.
Yes.
Trustee Churchill.
Yes. Item one, under Old Business, an ordinance amending the Village Code regarding the green program, collection of yard waste and branch and limb pickups, can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Mau has made a motion of a second.
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Mann. This incorporates the one change from the meeting that we had two weeks ago, where there was a reference to customers versus residents.
Residential utility use.
Other than that, spells out all the items in black and white that will be included in the green program. Further discussion or questions regarding this ordinance?
The only discussion I would put out there is that I, I'm in agreement with Bonnie, and then I don't know that a street sweeper should be in there, because then what can you keep adding in there? If we need a truck, if we need a vacuum, try anything that, then we can just start raising fees to put things on there, but, you know, that's minimal part of that $4, so that's the only discussion I have.
Yeah, I need to clarify, nothing you do tonight actually votes to purchase, lease, operate, or any of that with it.
Right.
Includes it into the.
It just allows it, and when we open that door, we allow for everything to be put into that and to, at some point, raise that fee.
Yep.
And we know water rates.
Then when the board votes for it, so.
Right.
So there you go. Agreed.
Well, and I will say on that, you know, because I thought about that part, and I also thought about all the debris that's in the street, the leaves, the limbs, the, and I think that, to me, that street sweeper cleans and takes care of those that are in the street. To me, I think that's one reason that is in there, because they're part of the green thing, the street sweeper's there to clean it up, and beyond other things, that, that's just my personal thought of it.
And that's how I see it too. I, I see the street sweeper as clearing the natural waste, so it doesn't clog our sewer system. And with the old sweeper, if it's not functional, you know, it does make sense to replace it with something that is functional. And then we're leasing it because we can repair it and keep it functional.
Yeah, we get out, beyond this, you got to set the definition, then the request will come out, and you'll hear more about what that plan would be, when, timing, cost, you know, and you'll have another chance to decide.
We have to put it out for bids.
Okay. And then as far as the operator, the way I understand that, there will be multiple people operating.
Takes about, right now, right now, through the green program, there is one full-time equivalent salary that is paid through there in the budget this year. That FTE is reduced to .8, primarily because our street department was still picking leaf bags and branches in the opening months of the fiscal year. As you move through it, it's more likely that number, that FTE number goes to half, so it's, it's continued to reduce the salary load in there, so.
And Dave, isn't it true that the street workers come out of the street department budget and the parks workers come out of the parks budget?
Generally, yes.
So the street, or the green fee workers should come out of the green fee budget?
There you go. Further questions or discussions?
Well, I, I would, I would just like to recap why we're here, you know, since we kind of got off on the, the street sweeper and, and the issue that's really not, really not before us today. And that is, the, the reason why, me personally, the reason why I, I'm going to support all three of these, the, the raising of the green fee, the approval of the Waste Management contract, and the approval of the National Tree Care for Branch Services is mostly based off of the survey that went out over last year and was totaled and published this year. If you look at that survey, and we talked about this in some of our subcommittee, subcommittee meetings, when, and I'll just, I'll just hit some highlights out of it, but, you know, one of the, one of the big ones, the number two problem that people see in their neighborhood is street conditions. That's 74% of the population of Chatham that, that participated in the survey believe that street conditions are the, the biggest problem that they have. They're also willing to pay more for taxes if the streets are improved, and that number was 45%. The primary reason we're doing this was to free up our road crews off of the leaf and bag and limb pickup and get this taken care of in a method that is more efficient. So, that leads me to the next questions on the survey, is, you know, what do people feel about the village itself? Well, when we talked about cleanliness, 56% say that the village is, is very, is clean. 21% say it's very good. So, in changing these services, we didn't want to eliminate them, because that would be, that would be directly affected, the cleanliness of our village would be directly affected if we eliminated the program itself. So, and there's, there's others, there's, there's more street conditions stuff. The biggest issue in our, in our village, when you read through the, the survey results, is the conditions of our roads. So let's get our guys working on our biggest problem. So, that's why I'm supporting these three proposals that we have in front of us, and, you know, that's, that's how we need to move forward. And I think, you know, for the increase of $24, while I hate to do it, I hate to increase the fees on anybody, because it's, it's my fee too, I hate to do it. I don't want, I don't want our village to go in the wrong direction, and if we can get it pointed in the right direction, this is one step in doing so. So, that's my bit.
Well.
There is no video working.
It's doing the same thing that it did last meeting, it's recording it, it says that its strength is perfect, I can see the numbers, it says it's live. It seemed like last time, then all of a sudden, the thing would start pushing out there. I know all the computers had an update of Windows 10, and I think it might not be working perfectly with YouTube right now, because this thing is recording, it's just not pushing it to YouTube right now. So, all I can say is that the last one we did, the whole meeting was there, it got broadcast, it just wasn't broadcasting it live right now.
Well, we're spending $2,000 a year with Sundown One, right? Can we, can they come out and make sure that this is?
Well, we're not spending $2,000 a year with Sundown One, that.
Or the software, the software company, that's who we bought the, the hardware, the streaming.
Yeah, the streaming software, so we'll try to, we'll try to find out what's going on, but when you go to test it, everything looks like it's working.
Yeah, I mean, it all got posted after last time, but yeah, I got the, a message too that my video wasn't going on. So, back to the agenda, you know, I've got a lot of different, I'll most likely support this program, but Trustee Mann brought up the survey results, and I, you know, as I've thought about this the last several days, you know, one of the questions though did say, you know, would you be willing to pay more in taxes if you knew the money would be spent too? At the lowest end of the list, it said add additional yard waste collection, so to Trustee Gerger's point, only 14% said they would. So, if we're looking at that, we're saying, if we're, we're looking at the gist of the program that existed as it does before we vote on this, it's for the branches, it's for the leaf bags, and it's for the cleanup days. Now, raising the $4 with the street sweeper, it's so minuscule, so that's the other side I come on down on this, it's, is it worth really taking it out when we can have the added benefit of cleaning the streets for a miniscule cost within that $4? So, and as you pointed out, 45% would be willing to build, I mean, or improve the streets and roads. I mean, so I mean, you could look at that different ways, and, and we've had it said different ways, so I want to point that out, and that's why this has been a tough decision for me. But we know, and we've heard resoundingly, people want to keep the program, so if we're keeping the program, and we heard from the special, at the special meeting, you know, and I can understand the, what Trustee Gerger's point, that should we be adding it in, but if we, if we didn't include it, you know, it's not going to be that much at the end of the day, so why not we get the benefit of adding it? And I've gone back and forth on this as well, and because the, the question doesn't ask the specific question, that's what's before us tonight, it's kind of all peripheral for us to consider. And, and we're not going to be providing the same service if we're not providing bags?
No.
And that's what the people that were here that night indicated, they wanted the same service, and actually, the old ordinance said it should be done on a yearly basis by a contractor. Right. Yeah, it did say, it said annually, the village will contract out, right? And that was why the fee was put in place at the beginning, as I understand it. But this is this ordinance, it's a different ordinance. Right.
All right, Madam Clerk, she takes the vote.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
No.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mau.
Yes.
Trustee Churchill.
Yes. Item two, under Old Business, resolution approving an agreement with Waste Management for Residential Yard Waste and Leaf Collection Service. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Mau has made a motion of a second.
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Mann. Any discussion regarding the ordinance authorizing that through your contract? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mau.
Yes.
Trustee Churchill.
Yes. New business, switching slightly, an ordinance making appropriations for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of May 2019, ending the 30th day of April 2020. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Mau has made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Charo. This is the appropriation backed by the, whatever, eight-page ordinance that backs a 145-page budget document, $26.6 million total fund budget for the year appropriations. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mau.
Yes.
Trustee Churchill.
Yes. Item two, is a resolution approving agreement with National Tree Care for Residential Limb Branch Collection Services. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Mau, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Charo. The limb and branch pickup portion of the green program, discussion, questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mau.
Yes.
Trustee Churchill.
Yes. Item number three, is an ordinance amending the provisions of the alcoholic beverages to authorize the liquor commissioner to limited extension of hour permits. Motion to bring this to the table?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Mann has made a motion of a second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Churchill. We were approached with a request from AJ's Corner to extend by an hour, is that what I told you? Extend their, extend their timeframe on Thursday to coincide with the homecoming. Nobody seemed to have an objection to it, we just didn't have a mechanism by which to do it, so this was what the proposal was on a limited basis. This authorizes by request to the village that the liquor commissioner can extend hours on specific days, as long as it's tied to a holiday or village-wide occurrence, which is the homecoming, so. Any questions?
Are the police okay with this?
Good. Madam Clerk.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mann. Or Trustee Mau.
Yes.
Trustee Churchill.
Yes. Hearing any additional public comments regarding any village business this evening? Ms. Judd.
I heard that South Sangamon has a new company that's managing it, is that true?
No.
No?
No. They're self-managing.
Well, they are, I mean, yeah, they hired their own employees, and their own employees are managing.
Okay. I, I figured that answer could be answered, so I'm giving that question. I feel that the fee situation is sliding down the hill that is really getting slick. Every time we seem to need something done, instead of proposing it out of the budget, we're just adding fees on to the citizens. And to me, that's a very slippery slope, because people are beginning to talk about this, not just my opinion, other people's opinion, that, you know, we need this fee for this, we need this fee for this, we need this fee for this, when in reality, our, we, we pay a person a six-figure salary to figure the budget. I, I just think that person should say, she run, or not because it's a she, but it is run, just like your household, you have X amount of dollars that you predict you get, those X amount of dollars should pay for what you need. She says salary is the biggest hit when it comes to the cost for the village. Well, I can imagine that it is, that's the cost for any employer, or they're not really employers, but the village isn't. But anyway, so I'm proposing that we have a fee for a forensic audit, that we, we can afford one, you know, the trustees don't believe that it'd be way too costly, but if we're adding fees on all the time, why can't we have a fee for a forensic audit? And I did do a survey of what people thought of the street sweeper coming out, of the green fee and that sort of thing. People do not want that service to go away. I don't either, I don't use it, but I still don't want it to go away. They feel that it should be in the budget through the street department, or make it its own department, but it should be in the budget, not an extra fee on the citizens. And, and another reason why I disagree with the $4 is because I feel that probably, maybe it's a 50/50, I don't have that answer, I don't even want to project that answer, but we have so many apartments in the village, that the people don't even use the service, but I still don't want it to go away. I don't use it, never have, in over 30 years, but I still don't want to go away, because I agree, I think our village looks good the majority of the time. Very, very seldom would I say that it doesn't, maybe after a storm or something, I might say that, but as a whole, we have a very nice village. I want it to stay that way. So, anyway, you know, can you let me know about the forensic audit fee? Because I, I think people would vote for it. Okay? Thank you.
Any additional comments, Seavy?
Could we please have video checked by somebody to see what's wrong, that it's not getting sent out?
They do, they do come out, and they were out here last time, and like Pat said, it recorded the whole thing, because we had it, and.
But if it didn't go out, people were sitting there wondering.
So what we, what we can't control YouTube, but for the portions of what we can control, they are looking and trying to fix that, so. Schedule of Meetings, Public Property and Recreation Commission meets 6:00 PM, July Schedule of meetings, Public Property and Recreation Commission meets 6:00 PM July 8th, the village board 6:00 PM July 9th. Committee of the whole follows 88 Transition Plan Committee 6:00 PM July 16th, Plan Commission July 18th at 6:00. The board 6:00 PM July 23rd, Utility Oversight Subcommittee Meeting August 12th at 6:00, and the Chatham Fire and Police Commission Meeting is August 21st at 5:30. No need for a closed session tonight?
Can I add the utility oversight for next Monday, so we can hear those two utility?
Monday at 6:00 PM?
Yeah, Monday at 6:00 PM.
All right.
Close to.
Thank you.
No closed session this evening? No further business, take motion adjourned.
I'll make that motion.
Don't jump over the motion adjourned in a second. Trustee Mann has made a motion, second by Trustee Gerger, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Meeting stands adjourned.